He's he's not really any of his across.
I could feel it.
I think we're all happening now that this is a storm era, we're gonna get through to this period and we'll swear in on the planet. We're gonna endure the twenty twenty one just like we have every four years since seventeen ninety.
The Trump campaign continues to collect affidavits and forward declarations from election workers detailing what it exists as evidence of voting irregularities. Those documents have been forwarded to the Department of Justice, where Attorney General Bill Barr has instructed investigators to examine them. On the level of saying such inquiries and reviews may be conducted if there are clear and apparently credible allegations of irregularities that have proved to potentially impact the outcome of the campaign of election in an individual state. Barr also caution his attorneys saying while serious allegations should be handled with great care, species speculative fanciful or far fetched claims did not give you basis for initiating federal indictments. The guidance did not sit well for the election.
I'm ready. Wait, listen. She's there. She's there, so.
Can we still mute it?
No, no. I can mute it.
You gotta get another one. Well, then get a different brand.
It is a different brand. I bought two of the other ones when I was. But we could be on, so. Waiting for to tell me what time.
No. Evil case.
Trump supporters who were so vocal in their support for the president during the election are promising dearly that the president does have a path to playing another four years.
I could join without video.
Yeah, probably.
There he is, T Young.
Uh huh.
Lucy.
She said.
Hi, I see you.
Right. Here. I don't see. Anyway. What's she say?
Uh, we'd like to ask anybody that is not speaking to mute yourself while you're on, please. We are getting some feedback. So if you're not actually recognized and speaking, please mute yourself.
There she is. Sorry, it won't let me mute.
It's trying.
Okay. Are you ready, Young James?
Yes. I'd call to order to November tenth, two twenty twenty, city council meeting, roll call, please. Mayor Webb, here. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember LaChiro, here. Councilmember McCall?
Here.
Also need approval of the agenda as your guise. I move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Van Second. Discussion, dissension. Very done. The government agenda. Brings us to the election of Mayor Pro Tem for one year. A council would be in pleasure to uh appoint a mayor pro tem. Don't all jump at once.
We have to nominate somebody.
We have to nominate.
I move to nominate Andy LaChiro.
I'd like to support.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? There are no more nominations. Nominations are over. Now we need a motion to accept the nomination.
I make a motion to accept the nomination.
Support.
Discussion, discussion. Welcome Mayor Pro Tem LaChiro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Councilwoman Melissa Sullivan for her service as Mayor Pro Tem. Cut many revenues and presided over a couple meetings and uh Councilmember Aubrey was also Mayor Pro Tem. Unfortunately, Mayor Webb just nothing during her term and.
Sorry.
But again, with this one year every year thing, that gives more people a chance to hold the office. It's important to working with them when they come around to that sermon.
As mayor, in the service of Mayor Pro Tem's position, I appreciate all the efforts and thank you for all your service of backing up me in case my absence and all the old grain openings and things that I cannot sometimes do with my job, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd like to move on to the special presentations on the pancreatic cancer awareness.
If you don't agree.
There you go, Mike.
Uh, City of Hazel Park Resolution Allowed Dash Zero Twenty Two Dash Zero Twenty. November shall be pancreatic cancer awareness month and declaring World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. Whereas in two thousand twenty, the American Society of Medical Oncology estimates fifty seven thousand six hundred adults be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty seven thousand fifty of them will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become the second leading cause of cancer death in the near future. Actually, it aren't that good. Uh, whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year general survival rate of only nine percent. Whereas symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally later stages, and ninety one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas is projected by the American Cancer Society approximately one thousand seven hundred and twenty deaths of pancreatic cancer will occur in Michigan in two thousand twenty. And whereas the good health and well-being of residents of Hazel Park may be enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about the symptoms and risk factors of pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Hazel Park City Council hereby resolves that November seventy designated as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Hazel Park and hereby designates Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty as World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in Hazel Park. Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully request approval of this.
Counsel, I'll move approval of the resolution to make November as pancreatic cancer aware.
Support.
Discussion, session. Yeah. I also like to, since we're here before you, I'm sitting now society to recognize that our efforts insisting in residence suffering from a serious medical emergency uh October twenty 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 and your attention to duty generous care and compassion helped save my life. Thank you, Todd Fisher.
Yeah. We'll give us.
Appreciate your service. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, people watching on the internet, Todd Fisher is a code officer for the City of Hazel Park and when he presented to patrol uh last month, he was swagged down by a resident who was suffering from a severe medical emergency. Because of the assistance rendered by Mr. Fisher, it's very likely that gentleman's life is safe, so want to recognize him for his outstanding efforts. And general excellence in the preparedness of the duties. Sometimes code officers are not the most popular people in the City of Hazel Park, and that's unfortunate because the job that they do is very necessary. And again, this just shows that my work at Hazel Park employees saved someone's life because their attention is needed and their commitment to serve.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
Great work.
I want to move on down to civic announcements and wish Todd a period a wonderful day and hopefully he enjoy great fruits of helping someone. It's not very often someone can have that. Civic announcements, I'd like to bring up one thing. Tomorrow's Veterans Day. You know a veteran, say thank you. That's all you gotta say. You don't understand. Anyone else have any civic announcements? Alyssa?
Um, I just wanted to remind people of the tree planting at Curran Park this weekend. It is the fourteenth and it is from eight forty-five uh ongoing. Uh, Curran Park is located on Cousins Avenue in Hazel Park, and this is in conjunction with Relief Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember, for bringing that up. This is very important. You do file trees there on Saturday. I know it's early to get up on a Saturday, but this is a very important event and it's very rewarding. Usually we have a lot of fun at these events, so please, uh, if you're not doing anything, come on out and help us plant some trees in Curran Park as Councilmember Sullivan stated, Curran Park is on Cousins between Rupert Heights and Ten Mile in their community and would love to have some folks out there helping us as possible.
Any other civic announcements from council? There are none. Any civic announcements from anyone else? We'll close civic announcements. Opens up public discussion. Anyone from the general public on the video, Zoom, wants to speak, please raise your hand for public discussion. Anyone? There are no one. Close public discussion. Council like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consented.
Support. Those one through seven. Sorry, yeah, one through seven. Any discussion? Dissension? Motion carries. Ministry of Reports. Item one. Orders to amend Title fifteen, Chapter fifteen point zero nine, property maintenance code for streaming.
Mr. Mayor, I'm for to uh, you put Melissa Schwartz on this. As you know, by the time we have the update, our building maintenance code and she has done that, so if you have any questions, she's gonna answer them. Uh, administration recommend.
Ready? Everybody? I move approval of the uh ordinance to amend Title fifteen, Chapter fifteen point zero nine, property maintenance code to now designate it as the International Property Maintenance Code. Support. Any more discussion? Ascension? Motion passes. Uh, item two, licensing information.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Campbell is here to make a presentation.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Pursued court order of the following are scores for the Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center applications based on the applicable City of Hazel Park ordinances. I will be reading the following into the record. Will include the application number, the applicant, which is the entity name or the doing business as, the applicant's address, and scores from the council person, council members for each application. Score one shall represent Councilmember Aubrey's score. Score two shall represent Councilmember LaChiro's score. Score three shall represent Councilmember Sullivan's score, and score four shall represent Mayor Webb's scores. At the conclusion of the reading, the minute the administration will request motion to receive and file um a spreadsheet document that includes all the information that is being read into the record for data. Application number one, PG Manufacturing Doing Business as Pure Wellness, address is five thirty-one East Eight Mile. Score one, one hundred and eighty-three point three. Score two, one hundred and eighty point four. Score three, one hundred and eighty-five point three. Score four, one hundred and seventy-seven point three. Application number two, PG Manufacturing Doing Business as Pure Wellness, twenty-one thousand through twenty-one thousand two, John R. Score one, one hundred and eighty-one point four. Score two, one hundred and seventy-eight point three. Score three, one hundred and eighty point three. Score four, one seventy-five point three. Application number three, Pure Roots LLC. The address of the applicant was two three zero five three South Chrysler. Score one, one forty-seven point one. Score two, one fifty-two point two. Score three, one forty point nine. Score four, one fifty-nine point one. Number four, Pure Roots. Address for this application was two zero seven three one, John R. Score one, one fifty point three. Score two, one forty-eight point two. Score three, one forty-six point three. And score four, one sixty-two point three. Application number five, A M P M R dash R Hazel Park. The address for this application is eight seven seven East Eight Mile Road. Score one, one ninety-six point eight. Score two, one in ninety-four point seven. Score three, two hundred and five point eight. Score four, one ninety-two point five. Application number six, GS Hazel Park, Doing Business as Green Square. Address on the application is two zero seven three one DeQuinder. Score one, one fifty-nine point five. Score two, one fifty-eight point five. Score three, one fifty-nine point five. Score four, one sixty-two point seven. Application seven, A F B H P LLC. The address for this application was eighteen forty-three East Eight Mile. Score one, one eighty point six. Score two, two oh three point one. Score three, one seventy-seven point five. Score four, two hundred point nine. Application number eight, Hazel Park Investment Group, Doing Business as Kind Alternative. The address for this application was six thirty-four West Nine Mile. Score one, one fifty-two point six. Score two, one fifty-three point six. Score three, one forty-nine point seven. And score four, one fifty-three point five. Application number nine, Helios One. The address for this application is two four nine oh six, John R. Score one, two eight, two oh eight, two hundred and eight point three. Score two, two hundred and five point three. Score three, two hundred and one. And score four, two hundred and six point one. Application number ten, Hazel Park Wellness and Solutions. Address for this application is two two zero three nine, John R. Score one, one hundred and seventy point one. Score two, one hundred and seventy-two point two. Score three, one sixty-four point nine. Score four, one eighty point five. Application number eleven, Ignite. Address two one seven one zero, John R. Score one, one fifty-nine point one. Score two, one sixty point one. Score three, one fifty-four point one. Score four, one fifty-six point eight. Number twelve, DJR Michigan Properties High Level Health, four 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 West Eight Mile. Score one, one sixty-two point three. Score two, one sixty-four point three. Score three, one fifty-nine point one. Score four, one sixty-four point one. Application number thirteen, Oasis Wellness. App, address for this application is two one four two three, John R. Score one, one fifty-four point four. Score two, one fifty-four point five. Score three, one forty-four point four. Score four, one fifty-one point three, excuse me. Application number fourteen, Green Hazel Park, Doing Business as Earth Medics. The address for this application is two one five zero nine, John R. Score one, one fifty-six point seven. Score two, one sixty point nine. Score three, one fifty-three point nine. Score four, one fifty-nine point nine. Application number fifteen, A Michigan Alternative Healing, two two zero one eight, John R. Score number one, one thirty-eight point six. Score number two, one forty point six. Score number three, one thirty-four point five. And score four, one thirty-two point four. Application number sixteen, Hazel Park Provisioning Center. Address is is two four seven oh five through two four seven one five, John R. Row. Score number one, one seventy-one point two. Score two, one eighty-one point three. Score three, one seventy-two point two. Score four, one eighty-one point two. Application number seventeen, Primitive, two one six one nine, John R. Score one, one fifty-seven point six. Score two, one sixty-one point seven. Score three, one fifty-eight point seven. Score four, one seventy point one. Application number eighteen. The entity name is actually two two six five five South Chrysler LLC. The address for that application is two two six five five South Chrysler. Score one, one forty-seven point nine. Score two, one forty-six point one. Score three, one forty-three point nine. Score four, one fifty-six point nine. Application number nineteen, Sham Rocks Provisioning. The address for this application is two three four two oh, John R. Application number or score number one, one six, one seventy-six point seven. Again, score number one, one seventy-six point seven. Score two, one seventy-seven point seven. Score three, one seventy-four point seven. And score four, one seventy-eight point seven. Number twenty, Apex Ultra Worldwide. This is three vacant lots north of the Tubby's uh on South Chrysler Drive. Score one, one seventy point six. Score two, one sixty-nine point five. Score three, one sixty-eight point five. Score four, one sixty-five point four. Number twenty-one, District Park, two zero nine four zero, John R. Score one, two oh seven point six. Score two, two hundred and twenty point nine. Score three, one hundred and ninety-seven point three. Score four, two hundred and sixteen point nine. Application number twenty-two, Leaf LLC. The address for this application is two one one zero seven, John R. Score one, one forty-nine point one. Score two, one forty-seven point one. Score three, one forty-six point nine. Score four, one fifty point two. Application number twenty-three, Unlock Provisioning. Address two four five one seven, John R. Score one, one ninety point five. Score two, one ninety-seven point nine. Score three, one ninety-nine point seven. Score four, one eighty-one point three. Number twenty-four, Choices. Address two one seven two nine, John R. Score one, one ninety point five. Score two, one eleven point five. Score three, one oh eight point three. Score four, one oh six point six. The application number twenty-five, Greenstone Farm. Address for this application is two three eight three one through two three eight three three, John R. Score number one, one oh seven point five. Score number two, one twenty-one point three. Score number three, one oh eight point seven. And score four, one hundred. Application number twenty-six, A S P M I LLC, Doing Business as Shango. Address two two eight two one South Chrysler. Score number one, two ten point five. Score number two, two oh nine point four. Score number three, two oh three point four. Score number four, two oh two point four. Application number twenty-seven, Argonamas HP, Doing Business as Elemental. The address for this application is two three six one seven, John R. Score one, one sixty-six point one. Score two, one sixty-one point nine. Score three, one sixty-three point two. Score four, one sixty-four. Application number twenty-eight, A Pure Pharma. The address is ten fifty-five East Nine Mile. Score one, one hundred and fifty-eight point two. Score two, one hundred and fifty-seven point five. Score three, one hundred and fifty-five point seven. Score four, one sixty-two. Thus, I would ask for a motion to enter this spreadsheet into or receive file spreadsheet.
I move to receive and file the spreadsheet and the scoring of the uh medical marijuana applicants. Second. Need more discussion? Council, ascension? Motion passes. Okay, takes us to boards and commissions. Anyone have any board commissions? See, we have the updated.
You have an updated list of boards and you have an updated list of boards and commissions and uh should you pack it's a uh copy of the policy for taking contact.
So it's actually turned out quite well. Thank you. There are none. Go to new business. Anyone have any new business? Anything want to talk about? At least we got traffic flowing around the city now, so it's a plus. And uh, we are going to have a tree lighting ceremony. Are we? With Santa with no children available, come see Santa, but we'll have Santa here.
Children can see Santa from a distance and return the lights on, but and they can shout the Santa and sing the Santa. We're not going to do individual uh Santa visits this year due to, you know, the COVID epidemic.
Location of that?
The location of that this year will be at Hazel Park City Hall. So for the first time in nearly uh seventeen or eighteen years, we're back at City Hall.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I mean, you guys were here at the.
Twenty seven. Yeah, probably thirty years.
Maybe, not thirty. I know it was here in seven, in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, so it's been more than twenty years, so.
Anyone does attend, we ask that you social distance and keep a mask on uh for the protection of others and as well as yourself. Takes us to communications from department heads. Anyone have any communications since department head sitting here?
Uh, Jeff Campbell, Community Economic Development, uh, City Attorney. I just wanted to um uh, thank uh, James Finkley, our city clerk, for managing an incredibly difficult election. Did a great job, and I also want to commend all the residents of Hazel Park, everybody was civil and nice at the police station I was at, which gives us faith and gives me faith in democracy. So thank you, everybody, and thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. Communications from the city attorney?
Yes, um, I wanted to thank Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and all of the council members and our city manager and administration for the uh resolution addressing pancreatic cancer awareness. It's very important of recognition and the efforts of our um elected officials and the leadership is greatly appreciated by all of us that I've talked to. So on behalf of our family and our friends and all those that don't even know us on the national and state level, thank you so much.
Thank you. City manager?
Uh, yes, I want to make sure that none of the other department heads had anything that they wanted to say. Racy, chief.
Yes.
James?
Tim said no. Tim said no.
Tim, Tim Young?
Yeah.
He should have said earlier.
Okay, I can't see him. I want to, uh, hide my back. I do, well.
Oh, you see through the whole.
So it's like he's in two spots. So actually, yes, I am telling the truth both ways. Anyways, I want to echo what Jeff Campbell said about the election, Jim Finkley and your team and all of the uh residents and employees who served as election inspectors at polls to ensure a fair election. Everybody did a great job. We had our results in uh earlier than most of the. We had our results in earlier than most of the communities in Oakwood County, and it's a testament to the fact that our people know what they're doing. The voters in Hazel Park, irrespective of what side of the political agenda that you were on. Everybody acted and conducted themselves appropriately. Everyone behaved well. Hazel Park, everyone knows how to behave. I think it speaks well for our city's understanding of our democratic traditions. So, I want to thank everybody for that. See some things on social media about leaf vacuuming. Unfortunately, we haven't had leaf vacuuming in the city of Hazel Park since two thousand and six. It's not a program that we are financially able to reinstitute as a regular vacuuming every two weeks. We do not have the personnel for that at this point in time, so I ask everyone to please bag your leaves. We will not be financially able to reinstitute that program. I don't know that it's a good idea to reinstitute anyways. Because now we have far fewer issues with clog catch bases and things like that since we've gone to the bagging program. And it's better for our system, it's better for the environment, and it just makes a whole lot of sense all the way around. So, please, please do not break your leaves into history. We're watching to see what happens with the elections. Obviously. States and local governments will get very hard by the coronavirus. We're watching to see what happens in Washington DC. With respect to assistance to state and local government, but we're doing everything that we can to grow our community. And make sure that we'll be able to weather the storm, but everybody needs to understand that we are in uncharted and unprecedented waters. And we will do the best that we can to make sure that we keep things going because the Michigan system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And it's a challenge for every interranged suburban community around the city of Detroit to meet our financial obligations that is trying to. But, we will soldier on, and again, Mayor, Council, thank you for your support and want to thank the residents of Hazel Park who support this community forever to come.
Okay, Councilmember McFaul? Yeah, I would, I'd like to thank the firefighters. They raised money by selling these T-shirts that I have on. For Awareness for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October, and all the hard work and dedication that they put into our city. So, I'd really like to thank them. I'd also like to thank the police officers. I'm not sure if a lot of people realize this. But actually, on Halloween, driving around, I know that at least one of the vehicles was driving around with spooky scary sound. Which is adding to the, adding to the celebration of Halloween, so I really appreciate that. Keeps that small-town feel, which I really like. So, thank you very much for that. Also, we had our first Halloween decoration contest, which I'd like to thank everybody who participated and everybody who voted. We had forty houses that were included, and everybody voted. There were over six hundred people that actually voted, so it was really nice. And there will be a Halloween or a holiday decoration contest coming up soon. Please watch for further details. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed with the other members of council, I would just like to thank Councilman McFaul for his efforts. This was, I think, one of the more fun Halloweens that he has a long time in Hazel Park, even though we're in the midst of a pandemic. His efforts put a real emphasis on door-to-door trick-or-treating and, you know, individual homes participating in the Halloween spirit. And I've always thought that Halloween is a great community-building holiday that gets people out. And I look forward to working with him next year to make it even bigger and get even more participation from our residents. Because it's a very community-building holiday, and it gets people out to meet their neighbors. And it's just, it was a very nice gesture this year.
A small bit of normalcy.
A small bit.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Councilmember Aubrey?
I wanted to thank everyone that came out to vote on Election Day, as well as all of our volunteers. They always put in very long hours on, on that day, as well as the clerk's office for handling an unprecedented election. With the number of absentee ballots that had to be counted, all of the restrictions with COVID, everybody voting in person, doing all the hard work there. So, really appreciate everybody taking time out of the day and putting in the extra effort to make this such a great election. And I'd like to congratulate all of the local winners, well, all of the winners in general. And extra congratulations to a lot of our local winners. We had people running for library board, school board. So, a couple of great, great races there, and that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
I kind of want to mirror some of the other comments made. Huge congratulations to everyone who ran and also to everyone who won. A giant thank you to all of our election workers and volunteers, our city staff and our police department for really ensuring that everybody had access to voting and safe access to voting. Also, want to commend our city for almost a ten percent increase. Councilmember McFaul pointed this out to me. And to increase almost ten percent in four years from our last election is, is a big turnout. So, I really want to give props to everybody who stepped up and voted. Additional thank you to the city clerk, James Finkley, for updating and organizing the training for all of our boards and commissions that's coming up soon. I know we had made that motion a while back, and I'm really looking forward to getting that going. Also, for developing the contact info policy for our boards and commissions during the midst of this outrageously escalated. And kind of unique voting situation, election period, so thank you for taking that on as well. And then I want to remind everybody to come out on Saturday for the tree planting and also to thank all of our veterans. I know Veterans Day is not until tomorrow, but just, I wanted to thank all of our veterans for the freedom that we have to have elections like this. And I come from a military family, and I appreciate their service and I appreciate everybody's service, so thank you for that. And be safe this weekend and take care.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, LaCuro. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Halloween was very fun to see. I was surprised that in Harding, we had nearly a hundred kids come by. I didn't count my daughter coming. I was, I would have figured half of that, but it just seemed like fewer, but that's what you count with nearly a hundred kids. Was safe, was fun to sit, you know, it was nice, raining, all the things that's been bad, bad. And I'm really proud of our citizens and all the workers and volunteers that this was an unprecedented election, but it was also. Voice their opinion and congratulations to all who ran and won, and thanks for all the hard work and everything. Thank you for electing Miracle Town. It's been a long. Gosh, maybe two, oh, three, I think it was, Miracle Town. But in the more, in mortal words of Tom Salmon, I want to say that we love somebody, tell them that if you have children, hug them every day. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank the staff, city clerk's office for a wonderful job with the elections. I also like to say thank you to the residents of Hazel Park showing their integrity and being respectful at the polls. And showing, hopefully, we can show other communities that you don't have to have. Be rude or obnoxious to show that you're a candidate, either way, whoever you voted for, you can be a better person. Hopefully, we can get other people to be that good as we are. Like to say thank you to the people that filled out the census forms, and census numbers are up for Hazel Park a little. So, we're good. I think that everybody did participate. I think they had enough time home during the census, the polling thing, to fill out those forms. And unfortunately, weren't able to do as much door-to-door outreach if we would like to. But there was quite a few commercials out there, some Facebook pages and posting things. Thank you, Councilman McFaul, for helping to do that as well. And I'd like to see that we move forward with our town and show the public everywhere else that we know how to do our city justice and how we know how to run it. Thank you for coming out and entertaining us this week. As there's, we have a record session for community organizations.
We, we do not, if anybody has any questions tonight, well, whatever. And we'll, we'll be happy to answer a thought.
I need a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn, just support. Okay, let's go.